Hello everybody! Welcome back to the channel! Um, so finally got the game. My dear, amazing, loving grandmother Bought me the Wildflowers game last night, so now we get to play it!
Yeah, she was dying to watch it.
Ah yes, Grandma's been dying to get me to play it. She's very far into it. She's asking me for help and I don't... Google. I don't know. But we are starting from where I left off in the demo. Cause it gives you that option. So if you haven't seen the demo yet, Go watch it. And then you'll be all caught up. Uh, boost harvest. Cool grandma!
The acolyte was the last witch initiated into our order. She can help guide you.
Okay. Let's check the map again. Yay! Okay. Uh... That, go ahead to... A deep red robe. Thanks! Oh, there, there they are.
Are you the far seer?
What? Yes, yes, far seer. That's me. No, a nearsighted far seer.
You know, you sound a little bit like-
You've no idea who I am. I'm wearing a mask. Listen, do you wanna sit here playing guessing games? Or do you wanna learn more magic?
Magic!
Great. I'm gonna teach you the art of incantations. Tricky stuff. Mess it up, and there won't be much left to you beyond dust.
That sounds a bit dangerous to start with.
Only to fool initiates that don't follow instructions. Now, listen closely. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Great. I need you to chop lots of wood.
What?
Turn it into paper.
Right!
You'll need a paper press. Put it in your tool shed.
How will this help me with incantations?
All will be revealed.
One of us is clearly crazy. I'm beginning to think it's me for listening to you.
One of us is clearly crazy. Oh shit. Okay. Paper for some reason. Well, I have paper, bro!
You made a lot of paper.
I made paper!
Great, just what we need.
I can't prepare.
I'm onto those and you'll have a use for them in two shakes. Incantations are spells read aloud. They require vast amounts of magic and special ingredients at the time of writing them down and are consumed when read aloud. But they make incredible change to the world. A lot of the most powerful spells are incantations.
Whoa, what do I need to do?
I like your spirit. The next step is obvious. Time for you to go fishing.
Wait, what?
Nah, just any old fishing. You'll only catch what you need at the beach, which is south of Thomas's farm. You must catch me some squid. I've had anchorage for calamari for days now.
I thought you were teaching me to do these powerful spells.
I am the best way I know how. Pay attention! Go get me those squid!
That's my guess.
Matthew's guess is that this is the fisherman dude, so... Makes sense.
I don't know, he's nearsighted and he's talked about fishing.
Because he's nearsighted and he's talked about fishing.
I don't know, I don't know anything about him.
I'm just re- Well, oh, go see Grandma first, I guess.
You did a great job casting your incantation to get your wand branch. But actually, writing incantations can be a touch trickier.
Yes, I gathered that I have a lot to gather.
It's not just that. When you write your incantation, you'll need to draw magic from the wellspring to charge it with power.
Draw what? From where?
Didn't you notice the great big cauldron right by the circle?
Yeah, but I just figured it was for extra big batches of potions.
Oh no. No, no, the coven cauldron is where we leave offerings for the wellspring. The source of all magic here on the island. Our task as a coven is to maintain the wellspring. We cannot draw more energy from it than we put in. I wrote the incantation you read before the elderyr, drawing from my magic reserves. But to craft your initiation incantation, you'll need your own. Go on and offer something to the wellspring. Over time, you will learn that it likes some offerings more than others. Try different things and see what happens.
Give an offering to the wellspring.
My firstborn child.
My firstborn child, alright. I'd get married first, or Matthew. I like using my mouse. What am I doing? Catch a squid, okay? Give an offering. The squid's probably the offering. I don't know where the well is. No, that's not fun. That's not a well. I listened. Mushroom? Toadstool? I'm gonna give him five toadstools. Heck yeah!
Whoa, so now I can cast spells? Cool!
Careful. We must never draw more magic from the wellspring than we need. Our offerings keep it in balance.
What happens if it falls out of balance?
Nothing for you to worry about, my dear. It is all of our responsibility to maintain the cauldron. And we've never failed in my lifetime. Just remember to leave offerings regularly.
Okay, I will.
Good girl. Now, you'd better get to work on writing your first incantation.
Yay! I don't want to. Grandma's not in bed. She's probably going to bed now, though. Let's go Grandma. I'll wait for Grandma. Let's go!
I wonder if she'll just magically teleport.
Better not, I'm gonna walk slow next door.
Sorry, 12:30. I love to wait.
But, you wait for Grandma. Kitty! Kitty, 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 meow, 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 meow. I'mma name you Shadow.
Man, time sure flies.
I know. I'm glad it doesn't do that here, I'd be fifty already. I need, I'm missing two people. I'm working on it! Okay?
There's a deadline.
I guess. Am I sick now? No, I healthy. I'm good.
Oh good, you're up.
Hi Grandma.
The mayor's called a town meeting this morning. We should get down there and see what he's making a fuss about this time.
Do you think it's some kind of trouble?
Ah, I really hope not, but I guess we'll see.
Lead the way Grandma!
Follow me.
Follow Grandma to Town Hall for meetings. There you go, girl. Come on. Well, you give me a second.
I'd better follow Grandma to the Town Hall.
Let me fa- let me water these first. Fine! So forget later. Grandma walks fast. Turn me on, here we go. La 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 la.
Settle down everyone, settle down. I've brought you together to discuss a very important matter. There have been very strange goings on in our beloved town of Fairhaven. There is a force at work in our community, and I don't know who's responsible. But whoever they are, they don't have Fairhaven's best interests at heart.
Oh, I don't like where this is going.
Me neither.
I've seen strange lights in the forest tonight.
Yeah. And folks in robes and masks wandering around after sunset.
Yes! Yes, good! You know exactly what I'm talking about.
Wait, I'm sure there's a rational explanation for all this.
No matter the cause, we must ensure our town doesn't become a home for rouseabouts and unsavory types. I ask all of you to keep a sharp eye out for signs of mischief. And if you see anything, report it to me.
Or me, if you'd prefer. I'd hate for anyone in Fairhaven to feel fearful.
Well, I never! Mayor Otto, soft on business. Soft in the head is more like it. Him and his fancy, rich's wife standing up there and casting judgment on others.
Uh oh, you're even better than I thought.
He can't just tell people to spy on their neighbors to be so afraid that they distrust everyone around them.
Maybe we could cast a goodwill spell to make everyone be nice to each other?
I wish it were that simple. But just because you can solve a problem with magic, doesn't mean you should. Thomas could use some help on his farm. I know he's got an order of beans due and he doesn't have enough plots going to make it in time. He's too proud to ask for help, though. Here, take these seeds. They should be enough to make the order.
Aren't these magic beans?
Oh heavens, no. But if you've got the means to give him a boost, it certainly wouldn't hurt.
Will do. Grandma wants you to go green beans out Thomas, make an order. I'm trying to figure out where you saw a sheet.
It was in, it was on the house.
Oh. Oh. Probably. Down and to the right. Uh... Yep. It's Thomas, what's up my dude? Where are you? Ooh, pretty trees. Thomas! Where the heck is he?
Maybe he just planted a thought in the wood. Have you met Thomas?
I don't know. Um... Ah, he's one I'm missing! Wh- what does he look like? Because this is... My Grandma sent me a picture of Grandma. She's talking about marriage lisons already.
Let's just check here.
Cat.
The native looking one.
The native looking one.
He was in the town meeting.
Oh, okay.
It's over here. He could be up in the town meeting still.
I have to go look for Thomas. Would it be easier with... Maybe, hold on. Went around in a circle and there he was, found him. Thomas, what's up my dude?
Hi, I'm Tara, Hazel Wild's granddaughter. Nice to meet you.
You know, I remember ya. You used to run past my farm on the way to the beach when you were little.
Yes! And Grandma always told me to mind that I didn't trample your crops. You're Thomas, right?
Yep.
Gosh, your farm has the most stunning view on the whole island.
I'm not selling.
I, I didn't mean.
Your grandma needs help on her farm. But it's not as easy as just moving here and picking up a pitchfork.
I know. I'm here to learn.
For Hazel's sake, I hope you learn quick.
Why are you mean? I don't like you. I don't care, no. I was introducing myself.
Now you can finally talk to him without peonies. Oh, that's why you have to meet people before?
I'm working on it. Alright, well, that's him. I think... If I'm correct, I believe it was this girl. What Grandma was saying, the purple haired girl?
Oh yeah, I'm saying one with purple hair.
She's the last one. I think, pretty sure.
Well, I don't know anything about-
Cause I remember everybody, what about her?
Her?
She's got yellow glasses? No, she's not on there, I don't know. I don't know. That's the, I don't know, I call him the bible guy.
Oh, I meant to ask you, have you met Parker, the carpenter, yet? He really helped turn the ruins of the old church into a wonderful new consciousness center for our members.
You have to talk to him a lot to level up. Holy cow.
How's the farm? Are you inundated with chores yet?
There's not that much to do, honestly. The farm seems so much smaller now that I'm an adult.
Hmm. When I first came here, I didn't think I'd have much work either. But living things, plants and people, are always growing, changing, becoming rundown. And caring for them takes a lot of time.
Juliet told me you said hello to her. Thank you, that girl is so shy. Well, teenagers have a lot going through their heads. It's no wonder some of them deal by just not talking. Her father passing so unexpectedly hasn't helped. Hola!
Hey new girl, how's farm life treating you so far?
I'm still figuring everything out.
Well, let me know if anyone ever repairs the entrance to the mine by your farm. I run the jewelry shop. But it's a bit hard making jewelry without actual jewels, you know? Crafting beautiful pieces is one thing, but sourcing the stones is tough.
I'll let you know.
Have you met my boo yet? His shop is right next door.
That is so nice. You must never get sick of each other, since you live and work so close together.
Nope. Why, did he say something like that? I mean, Francis does like his quiet time.
Better for him.
Hey, have you tried Kim's butcher shop yet? There was nowhere on the island to get good bacon until they came along. Now Kai and I can have ourselves a breakfast with the works on the weekends.
I like Kai, he's funny. He's talking to everybody.
Why not?
It's so like, cool of you to come hang with Hazel. When I first took over my stall from the last owner, Hazel came and bought chocolate every day.
That's the guy-
Turns out, she doesn't even like chocolate. She just figured if other people saw her giving me business, they would too.
Well, I do like chocolate, so you will be seeing a lot of me too.
Sweet.
Hey Parker! Quick question. Did the mayor make you play a game to meet everyone when you first moved here?
Well, Otto wasn't mayor back then. It was Violet's dad, Antonio Miranda. And, no, I don't think he asked me to do that. It might have been useful, come to think about it. Some folks are harder to get to know than others.
Hmm, very interesting. Is it dark already? Oh my god! After you talk to Thomas, look for his farm.
I can go back, it's-
That's Kim.
So, you moved here to help out on Hazel's farm? Do you know anything about farming?
Not even a little bit.
Oh, don't sweat it. I only worked in my parents' kitchen before opening my own butcher. I mean, you've at least had a garden or potted plants before, right?
Not really.
Oh. W- well, good luck.
Thanks!
Hey old man, I want to talk. Where are you going? Sorry, I'm, I'm literally bugging everyone.
Your grandma was always good luck on a boat back in the day. She had a harens eye for spotting fish.
But, how can you see fish if they're underwater?
She hasn't taught you much, has she?
Uh, um, potatoes?
Here, take this rod. Keep your eyes peeled whenever you're near water for the shadows of swimming fish.
I did know.
When you see them near the surface like that, you know they're feeding. Trick is to get one of them to nibble on your hook, instead of baitfish they're chasing.
How do I do that?
You'll need some bait. Here are some worms. Hey, you're not the squeamish type, are ya? You gotta hook your bait and cast your line. You'll feel it when you got one, and then you reel it in.
Wait, 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 back up. How do I cast my line?
You'll get the hang of it. The lake in the forest is a nice place to start. But, take care, you hear? Don't go in those woods after sunset. I've seen things, well, you wouldn't believe me. My boy Otto didn't either till he saw it for himself. Just stay safe and come back and see me after you've given it a few tries.
Otto's the, the mayor. Well, we have Violet still. Okay.
What, oh, right.
Grandma said, after you talk to Thomas, go past his farm. And there's a, something ranch. Follow the road of Violet and stand a bit further past.
Okay, I can try. It's also late.
Well, no.
Not that, okay.
It's past.
Well, I don't know which direction she means by past, cause this is technically past if you think about it.
That way?
Could be this way. This also leads to a beach.
Oh.
Yeah, there's a beach.
I didn't say go that way.
Oh, oh. There's a north that just leads back to your farm.
Oh, I don't know. Well, you read it.
Um, you can have a head start tomorrow. I know, I just... Use some of your stamina that you have saved up. You gotta be really close to get stuff.
Yeah. Can't do big trees yet.
I could eat some food to recover some strength.
She sounded very depressed about that.
Hey, weeds!
You used up all my weeds, now I'm never gonna get anymore.
No, I know, look at these flowers, they'll come back.
Okay.
You said you had to water-
Yeah, I have to water them every day.
I'm all out of str- I could eat some food.
Cool.
I didn't know it took- Did it cook everywhere?
I don't know. I guess someone says eat, eat, I don't know. There we go. No, one more day. They take four, five days to grow? Where's Grandma? Probably with her homies.
What a long day.
Burning man!
I noticed that you, when you waited too long, you didn't get all your stamina back.
Saturday. Hi Grandma! What did I get, what?
Squid, potatoes, go fishing, try to find the pink haired girl.
Let's go try to find the pink haired girl.
I have a potato soup for you.
Yay! Grandma, potatoes!
I can't thank you enough for helping out here sweetheart. Are the potatoes ready to harvest?
Yes Grandma, here's four potatoes from the field.
Ooh, wonderful. Maybe you've got a greener thumb than you thought? Why don't you take them down to the general store and sell them? I'm sure Lena will give us a fair price for them.
Oh, so we're supposed to sell them?
Oh, here Grandma, Sophia gave me this pie to give to you.
Apple? How original. You keep it honeybee. The sugar rush will give you some energy when you need it.
Take Grandma.
Have this sprout. I know you could go straight to, or you could attract the fish right now. Why not knock some things out before you see the people?
Wormy, a wiggly little creature that makes gray fishing bait.
Ooh, quick!
Oh yeah!
I don't know. Oh, tiny baby fish. Pup, pup fish. A playful freshwater fish found near the farm. Common, sell to Bruno or cook with it. Gross, same.
Might as well fish this way.
I got another fishers. I don't know, a teeny fish found here in the farm. Sell it or cook it. One more time. One more time. There we go. I can get that.
Got one!
Yay! Giant or small silvery fish. A rare catch. Sell it to Bruno or cook. Yay!
It's through your thumbs. So, just head down. Oh, I don't know when he has a shop open, but I've actually held on to him.
Well, Grandma said that her Violet's store is like by the city hall and stuff.
Oh, so yeah, I know that way. I did. Was it the bakery?
Oh, right here.
I place a monthly order for fresh flowers, Violet. It's not like I asked for a rush job.
I'm sorry. It's just that the ferry's running behind schedule. Again. Maybe if the ferry wasn't underfunded, this wouldn't happen.
Make excuses if you like. Late is late, as I tell my students.
Oh, you're a great teacher, aren't you?
Bad time? Ugh, no. It's fine. I just... When my dad was mayor, the ferry always ran on time. Hey, do you have any wildflowers going on your farm? Maybe I could make some substitutions. Uh, sort of. How do you feel about thistles? You're suggesting I make a bouquet out of thistles?
Yes.
Thistles? Look, if you don't want them... Did you hear me say no? The sooner I can get Vanessa out of my hair, the better.
Well, hi, nice to meet you, I guess.
Oh my gosh, you've gotta be Tara!
There we go. Got the achievement.
Well, now I'm embarrassed. Don't be. It's sweet. I wish I had a grandma here to talk about how great I am. Anyway, I'm Violet. Pleased to meet you, Violet. We don't get too many new faces around here in Fairhaven, so let me know if you ever want to hang out.
Woo, new friend!
So, anything I can put in my bouquets? Please tell me you have the thistles I asked for. They're harder to find than I thought. Well, hurry up. The hothouse blooms still haven't come. And I think Vanessa's planning some fancy dinner, so, so she's not gonna let this one go.
Alright. Let's go get you some weird-looking thistles. I have to go see the mayor guy. I'll do it later.
I'll also go down and see if there's fish. I'll go down and see if there's doggos. I don't know who's ours.
The mayor?
Alright, yeah.
I have fishers for you.
You got the look of a lifelong angler in your eyes now. Oh, now here's a real challenge. Catching a certain fish is about the right bait, the right place, and luck. I got a hankering for some nice, fresh striped sea bass. They're ocean fish, so you gotta go to the beach. They might go for a worm, but you'll have better luck with this. In the future, you can keep bait fish you catch to try and hook bigger and more valuable fish. Come back when you caught one.
Alright. Oh, there he is. Oh god, I lost my mouse. Dude!
He's busy, he gotta get in front of her.
Wonderful! The last citizen has let me know that you've been introduced. As promised, here is your reward for playing our little game. We hope it helps you acclimatize.
Thanks. Money's great too, though.
That is money.
Yeah, that's what.
Awesome. Okay, bye. Hello.
Fair warning, mom might try to overload you with food. Feeding people is, well, like her love language.
Just gonna enjoy her little guitar playing for a second. Alright, thank you. Beautiful. Oh, I don't know where the hell I'm at. Hello?
Juliet's like, always staring at Sebastian. Then, the minute he looks at her, she looks away.
Where's Juliet? Are you, I don't know, who? Juliet, okay. Sebastian. Okay. Okay. Just... Try in here.
General store?
Where's, I don't know. Do I need to go to the general store?
They sell your potatoes.
I like my potatoes.
Yeah, but it's a bust.
Oh, that's the...
Butcher. Now you're in the general. The bag. Bag symbol? Bag symbol. There you go.
Why are you being mean?
I am not being mean. I am trying to help.
Yay! Great.
I can't believe you're married now. In my head, you're still sixteen.
Believe me, I wonder every day about where the time's gone.
Same.
Oh, if you have questions about the buildings on your farm, don't hesitate to ask Parker. He's the sweetest guy. I couldn't have asked for better.
That's her husband, do you believe?
Hey, I'm here. Sorry, two cats are play fighting.
Told me to go talk to Grandma.
Oh, I'm gonna make a circle with the arrows. Right slash left.
Can't go fishing here.
Is it by that lighthouse? I think that's where they're gonna next to go.
What's that on the beach? A chub. A common rayfin fish found near the mountains. They're too small to use in recipes, but can be sold as to Bruno or as bait. It's at a...
Quick!
If you get a small one, you can wait, so you can try and get a better fish. So you don't have to reel in every single fish. I got one. Gross! Let's go... I don't know. Make a loop, I guess. I don't know. I don't know what's better. The mouse or this keyboard. Grouchy-ass neighbor. He's mean. Oh, well, I'll come back. Ooh, mushrooms. Thistles?
Yeah, purple.
There's lots of purple. These? These?
Yes, there you go.
There we go. Of course. She's not here. I don't know what I'm doing. I'm just playing a game. He's still low? Oh, he just went into his house. What am I doing? I have to catch a friggin' squid. At the beach. Okay. Did that. Okay, I'll do it tomorrow. Okay. Well, either way, I have to do stuff tomorrow.
Try to go fishing before you leave. Across the bridge.
Oh yeah, there's a fishing spot here. I'll just try a worm. Who knows? I like...
Oh, quick! Got one!
I like her little, with her humming. It's really pretty. A common oily member of the heron family that's found in the ocean. Well, they said the squid would be on a beach, so I guess... Beach fishing. Oh, I know, Jesus. Ooh, lobster! I rock lobster! I got it! I had to keep it on! Yay! Oh, 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 okay. Yeah, sure. I, I know, but it was a lobster. Okay, well, we have stuff to do tomorrow, so might as well just go home.
Use the rest of your energy on wood.
Do I need more wood?
Oh, it hurt. You guys used all your wood on paper. And I'm putting up a place for it.
Oh my god, what is going on?
I think you weren't in the right spot in the game. Strength correction to the animation.
Oh.
Which could be a little harsh.
Do I have seeds to plant?
Uh, I wanna just... I think those are the seeds you're supposed to give.
Oh, okay. Oh god. Hey, what should we put it? Guess somewhere right here. I guess right there.
Yeah, I worked out.
I don't know what the hell happened.
I think he accidentally salvaged. Save, down, the middle one? The blue one?
Says space. Oh.
Add some... Okay, alright. Do you want to move the ones on top? I would do, I would move, I don't know.
What?
I was thinking of moving it all the way over, but that's just me.
Right here?
Yeah, that would work too.
Where?
On side by side.
Okay.
That's just me.
Okay.
Sorry, that's just how I respond, thank you.
I don't... So did I do it? Okay, my gosh.
I'll have it on it. Alright.
Bye-bye. There.
You're doing quest, yay!
Grandma home? Okay.
She won't be home until...
Can I cook anything?
Looks like you're missing...
Alright, it tells you... If I'm missing stuff. Guess we starve another day. Oh! My first potion! Oh, ate, ate out.
Well, if you go to sleep, it will be...
I know, but... This means I need to get the... Mine open up.
And money, oh god.
Well, I guess I'll just go to sleep. I've got one.
Am I ready for bed?
The clock says yes. I don't know, sorry.
I question myself too. There's Grandma.
I get to tell her all about my adventures from yesterday?
I guess so.
Yay! Grandma, guess what? We did.
Great job. Now we just need to fill it with weeds and let it work its magic. Then, we can start making garden beds.
Alright.
Lena bought the potatoes just as you said. Oh, here's the money, Grandma!
Ah, I won't hear of it. You did all the work. You deserve the reward.
But Grandma, I...
I mean it. If you want to keep fixing things up around here, you'll need all the cash you can get anyway. Buy some more seeds. If we keep the fields planted, we'll always have a way to make ends meet.
Well, o- okay, but only because I'm going to use the earnings to help the farm.
Yay!
Tell me, honeybee, does Arthur mind that you left your job in the city to come help me?
Well, I didn't really leave my job. My job left me. Our site got acquired, but the new parent company just wanted our subscriber list, not our editors. Maybe Dad wishes I was using my degree in a new job in the city.
Oh, Arthur or Dad?
Then who would help you here? He's not going to come do farmwork.
I thought it was gonna be like a boyfriend or husband that we just left.
That's for certain. Your father has the blackest thumb I've ever known. Even when he was a boy. Oh, we were sad when he left, but the garden sure wasn't.
I bet. Alright, let's go... Bruno, let's go Bruno. I'll come back. You know, I probably need it. It's boosting, so... I'm eating gummy, sorry. I'll probably be able to walk friggin' faster. Well, it said boosting.
Harvest.
Oh. Well, now I'm sad.
Um, you gonna take this health?
I want to be faster.
Yes, but maybe you could actually meet up with, uh, Thomas?
Oh yeah.
That's not the right path.
Wanna play this game?
I just don't want you to be lost.
I'm always lost!
That's why I'm your navigator. That's yelling at you in the background.
Thomas, don't yell at me again, okay?
Hi, it's me again. I've been trying to help out my grandma, but I don't know much about farming at all.
Yep. Like I said, not so easy. Hazel's got some of the best soil on the island. Shame for it to go to waste. Look, city girl, just water your plants and you'll do fine.
I guess you needed to talk to him a lot before you even helping him?
Oh my god, you're serious?
I mean, you've been in...
I just started! I couldn't do anything in the demo. They wanted me to talk to everybody.
I know you missed them, so... I guess you're just gonna be a little bit behind on his side.
Whatever, he's a dick in English. Nope, I don't care, I don't like him.
See if the neighbors are dicks.
Yeah. Yeah. Hello?
So, anything I can put in my bocce? Stress no more, I found just the thing. See? They're pretty. Yes, those will do nicely. It's hard sometimes, filling all these orders to decorate the house I grew up in.
Whoa, does the mansion go with the job?
Yep. Anyway, thanks. You saved my butt.
Ooh, tulips. Pretty. I like tulips.
Look, I don't even like flowers that much, but I can set my own hours. I like being able to be there when my little brother gets home from school.
That's so nice. How old is the little guy?
Sixteen. But he still likes it when I make him a snack, okay?
She's sassy and I like it. I like her a lot. Oh, okay. It looks like Violet is really getting to know Tara. Keep an eye out for her on the island at different times and something special might happen. I want to ask her out. I don't want no damn boy. Already got one. Bruno.
We could get a stall.
I need to... Take note of... Could be fishing.
If you click on his, I mean, fishes over by the lighthouse.
What day is it?
Sunday. Yes, Sunday.
Closed.
What about Monday?
Closed.
Next day will be Tuesday.
Don't I just have to grow them though? Yeah, I just have to grow them and give them to him. I think that's why I was able to make the potion, so I could make him grow faster for him.
Do you want to make more, uh, get more seeds while we're down here then? General store?
I want to take... I want to take... Notes. Looked like it was lacking a little. She's closed.
God damn it. Damn, everyone's religious.
He's not. He's open.
I know, I'm...
Cat! I'm gonna marry the cat. Oh.
Oh, look at the head scratchers.
She's closed. I'm gonna be taking notes and stuff, but I don't know what to do then. I guess we just go, go home, I guess.
Go home and try to grow shit?
Yep.
Make more soil?
Wish I could run the bell. She's closed. Yeah, everyone's...
I guess Sunday is just a garden day.
Aw, hey there kitty. Do you belong to my grandma?
Maybe.
Meow!
Aw, you're a good kitty. Grandma, you didn't tell me you have a cat.
A cat? The last cat I had was old Shadow, rest his soul. He wasn't much to look at, but he was a darn good mouser.
This cat isn't yours? She seems awfully familiar with your garden.
Oh no, I don't own that cat. What a notion. She's a good friend to have around though, so play nice.
If you look, try to. When I talk to grandma, this picture right here, it's little me. I just saw it and I thought it was cute. Let's do... More of these, I guess, because we do have to do eight of them, so...
Maybe you should make another soil bin.
How do I do the potion thing? Is it already activated?
Uh, click on it again? There you go.
My first potion thingy. I do it for this one too? Oh, I only have one. Okay.
What did it do?
It just makes them grow faster.
Click on the thing, I want to see how much, though.
Apply this potion to plants to get more produce. Oh, I'll just get more produce.
You should make another one then. Maybe you should make another one of those since they take a day. They just take wood, right?
I have plenty of wood. Two weeds.
Think you had some weeds over there. Just add it down there.
There's one. I don't know why grandma's having issues with weeds. I don't... Like, look at three. I, what? I think her game's broken. Or she just has bad timing. I don't know. I'm gonna get them all though. Mushroom.
Yeah, I think that potion uses some weeds.
Well, let me go for, find out first. Uh, mandrakes. I don't know. There we go. Easy. Little mice use. Oh, they're not there right now. What? Okay.
Rock, stick, push.
I don't even know what to do.
And maybe, uh, the squid suit, whoever was in front of both.
Bruno needed it, I thought.
No, it's just a potion, potion thing.
Oh, forgot. I thought Bruno needed it. See, there's more! I really can't wait till I can walk fast. God.
You know, there's quite a few of us who moved here from a city. Francis, Kim, Parker, and messenger Cameron, of course, were taking over.
Watch out for Sophia. She likes to play matchmaker and you're too cute to resist setting up.
Wait, how did you know I was single?
Oh, honey, it's a small town.
Want to talk to?
Okay, so I met everyone in town and reported back to Otto. So, is he super into keeping tabs on everyone?
More than the last mayor, I guess. But strange things do happen here sometimes. Things you can't really explain. We gotta look out for one another.
Makes sense. Oh, new witch friends. Cat!
Aw, such a pretty girl.
Looks like my misty a little. Squid.
Looks like, uh, something happened after this other time.
Oh, with flowers. I know grandma likes them for her taste, I don't know. Grandma, what's up? Who do I get the squid to?
My red.
Yo, I got your squid, bra.
Oh, look at those beautiful squid. Good work, novice.
So, when you finish your lunch, can we get back to incantations?
No, no, these aren't for lunch. You need to make some nice black ink, and squid ink is the best.
You could have said so.
I just did! Now, you'll need a desk, set it up in your sack of... That's your basement. You wouldn't want anyone to happen on your half-written incantations. Once you've got your ink, there's a couple more things you'll need. Come back here, and I'll give them to you.
Okay. I'm gonna build a desk.
Far seer.
I'm sorry, what?
Name's far seer. I see. Far.
Like you've got great vision?
Visions.
Right. Okay, nice to meet you, far seer.
Bye, Bruno. Desk can now be constructed in your basement. Oof. Have to give you a... Want a peanut? Hey man.
Well, your purple gauge, that's what the offering is?
Oh.
You can run to the basement and see what we can do to that desk.
I want to go run to my basement. Kitty!
I'm pretty sure it's just that.
A desk.
Hey, what?
Should I put this maybe? I can turn it too.
Over that corner?
Right here?
Everything else takes...
Right. I'll get it tomorrow, probably.
Right on back tomorrow. How's that potion?
Thirty minutes. Maybe I'll just wait here. No, I don't know.
You got until two.
Twenty minutes.
So you can grab it and throw it on your crops real quick. If you're cooking up.
There we go. There we go. How do I do with it?
You can make those, the growing bins, but you might need wood.
These?
Yeah.
Yeah, I need some more wood. I'll do it later. Yay! Look how good I'm doing already. Thanks to the help of Mafu. Should I go to bed? I mean, I don't want to, but... And I think we'll end the video on Monday. Yeah. I think that's good. There we go. That was a fun first kind of video, if you count the demo as the first video. Kind of. Because you do continue on. You can. I hope you guys enjoyed the video. I, I like the game. I'm glad Matthew's here to help me because I get lost during everything.
Yeah, you're just not, I mean, you're just not the navigator.
Yeah, I'm not not a navigator. Well, hope you guys enjoyed. Like and subscribe if you would, pretty please. And I'll see you in the next one. Bye bye!